Good evening. Welcome to the January 23, 2024 Village of Bolingbrook Board Meeting. Before we proceed, I'd like to just mention a couple of procedural items. If you wish to address the board regarding anything on this evening's agenda or general comments, we do have forms in the back for you to fill out, and please hand it to the clerk as you come and address the board. Tonight, we have several things going on. We've got a packed house, and it's great. I love to see people. That means residents and communities engaging, so I love to see that. The first item on the agenda this evening will be a consent agenda only, so we'll go through all of that. But first, I would like to invite Boy Scout Troop 34 and their Scout Master Ian Mastonin to join us and lead us in the pledge, please. All right, Scouts, come on up here. Right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, so much. They are here doing a project for scouting, correct? One of their merit badges? You picked a perfect meeting. And I know you might have school tomorrow, so if you have to duck out early, feel free to do so. Okay, tonight, we have three opportunities on our agenda for public comments. The first one is we have six items on a consent agenda only. When we reach that point in our agenda, I will ask for comments related to only those items. The second opportunity for comments occurs following the introduction of Item G, as in George, PC 23-03, regarding the DuPage Township Resource Center and Food Pantry. I will ask comments related only to that item to be in the second set. And finally, there will be an opportunity for public comments after all agenda items have been considered and are open to general topics. Good? If you wish to make a public comment, we ask that you fill out one of the forms in your sign out and give it to the clerk before you proceed to the microphone. This assures that we have your name recorded accurately for the minutes. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak under Agenda Section E2 and Section G, Public Comments, Agenda Items Only, or Agenda Section I, Public Comments, must adhere to the following guidelines. Please announce your name and address before commenting. All comments are limited to three minutes for each citizen and will be permitted to speak once. So, just for clarity, transparency, we have a clock. It's three minutes. The clerk will be the one to start and stop the clock, and so let's please, for the sake of organization, adhere to the time. When addressing, please be sure to address the Village Board. Thank you for attending the meeting this evening and for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Madam Mayor, Trustees Zarate?
Here.
Trustee Quintero?
Present.
Trustee Kelly?
Here.
Trustee Lawler?
Here.
Trustee Doris?
Here.
Trustee Carpanzano?
Here.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting January 9, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lawler, second. Trustee Kelly. Any additions, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of our agenda. Mr. Odelson, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
None this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Odelson, may I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Second.
Trustee Carpanzano, second. Trustee Doris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no approvals of boards this evening or commissions. I do have a proclamation. This evening, we are presenting a proclamation to the Sons of the American Legion in recognition of their Four Chaplains Day on February 3, 2024. Accepting the proclamation this evening is Bryson R. Taylor, Commander of Sons of the American Legion Squadron 1288. Could you please join me? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Whereas the Sons of the American Legion Squadron 1288 Detachment of Illinois have been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders, and whereas February 3, 2024 will mark the 82nd anniversary of the tragedy of the SS Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four Army chaplains of four faiths who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, Methodist, and Dutch Reformed, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others, and whereas it is fitting at a time when the freedom of our world is imperiled that a Village of Bolingbrook should give special recognition to the memory of those who sacrificed their lives for the cause of freedom, and whereas the heroic deed of the four chaplains and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and forever shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world, and whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice to the cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain. Now, therefore, I, Mary Alexander Basta, Mayor of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Bolingbrook, Will and DuPage Counties, Illinois, do hereby proclaim, February 3, 2024, as the Sons of the American Legion, Four Chaplains Day in the Village of Bolingbrook, and urge all citizens to pause on this anniversary day and honor those who gave their lives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to be here. I'm Board of Trustees. Once again, I'm Bryson Taylor, Commander of Squadron 1288, Sons of American Legion, here in Bolingbrook, This Four Chaplains Day is a very special day, not only in military history, to remember four chaplains who made the ultimate sacrifice, but also a symbolic one of four men coming from four different walks of life and, in a very tragic moment, deciding that their last moments, they were going to bond together. On February 3, 2024, this year, we will be holding an event to honor them right here at the Bolingbrook Community Center at 12:30, 201 Canterbury Lane, Suite A. I'm glad that Bolingbrook has allowed us to take part in this celebration because we are a very diverse community, just looking out at this boardroom right now, and it really means a lot, not only to the Sons, but both VFW Post 5917 and American Legion Post 1288 for allowing this. I want to thank you again for having us here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, have we received any comments in advance of tonight's meeting regarding
the consent agenda?
None for the consent agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone present tonight who wishes to address the board regarding anything on this evening's consent agenda? Bill listing A, $1,160,284.17. Bill listing B, $303,947.22, for a total of $1,420,231.39. Are there any questions from the trustees? May please have a motion to approve the bill listings.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Quintero, second. Trustee Carpanzano. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Trustee Carpanzano?
Yes.
Trustee Zarate?
Yes.
Trustee Lawler?
Yes.
Trustee Quintero?
Yes.
Trustee Doris?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next up are tax receipts. November 2023 State Income Tax, $1,179,16.45, which is a 7.2% increase from one year ago. October 2023 Sales Tax, $3,366,908.61, which is 2.5% decrease from a year ago. November 2023 Motor Fuel Tax, $306,561.94, a 21.5% increase from one year ago. October 2023 State Administrative Fee is $27,238.11. Tonight, our consent agenda includes six items, which will be voted on with a single vote without discussion. Do any of the trustees wish to have anything from the consent agenda Hearing none, we'll proceed with the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes one motion, motion to approve low bid from Hydro Vision Technology for the 2023 Sanitary Sewer Televising Project Eastside I&amp;I Program in the amount of $35,129.80. Four bids were received for the project to clean and televise sanitary sewers, identifying and repairing cracks and holes. The project is located in Area 3 at the northeast corner of Bowton Road and Route 53. This will be funded by a grant from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, provided by Will County. This has been reviewed and approved by Public Services and Development Commission. The consent agenda also includes the following resolution, Resolution 24R-004, approving proposal for purchase of furniture from City Studios LLC, subject to attorney approval. The Town Center Pavilion Project involves furnishing, which is funded by the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, two-part grant with a budget of $214,977.80, reviewed by all relevant personnel and officials. Consent agenda includes the following ordinance, PC 24 dot 01, approving the special use permit for a commercial recreation facility with extended hours of operation, Hot Works, located at 129 South Weber Road. Rita Dufresne is our applicant. The boutique-style fitness facility operates 24 hours a day and features both a sauna area and workout equipment. This has been reviewed and approved by our plan commission. And the corresponding ordinance is Ordinance 24 dash 004, approving special use permit for a commercial recreation facility with extended hours of operation, Hot Works, 129 South Weber Road. PC 24 dot 02, approval of the special use permit for a commercial recreational facility, Foss Swim School, 155 North Weber Road. Graham Robb is the applicant. The indoor swim school primarily offers lessons for children and provides opportunities for their family members to swim. It is the 28th location nationwide and the ninth in the Chicagoland area, has been reviewed and approved by our public, I'm sorry, our plan commission. The corresponding ordinance, 24 dash 005, approving special use permit for a commercial recreation facility, Foss Swim School, 155 North Weber Road. Ordinance 24 dash 006, amending Chapter 6 of the Bolingbrook Village Code, decreasing Class C8 Beer and Wine from 3 to 2, Holy Granoli, located at 714 East Bowton Road. The current owner has chosen not to renew their liquor license, necessitating its elimination as per our municipal code. This has been reviewed and approved by all officials. Next ordinance, 24 dash 007, amending Chapter 6 of the Bolingbrook Village Code, decreasing Class D Full Service from 14 to 13 Cheddar's Scratch Kitchen, number 2036, located at 105 Remington Boulevard. The restaurant has closed, and the liquor license must be eliminated per our municipal code, reviewed and approved by all relevant personnel and officials. This is the end of our consent agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Kelly, second. Trustee Doris. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Trustee Zarate?
Yes.
Trustee Quintero?
Yes.
Trustee Lawler?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Trustee Doris?
Yes.
Trustee Carpanzano?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is PC 23 dot 03, recommended denial of a special use permit for a planned development with variances and concept plan, DuPage Township Resource Center and Food Pantry, northeast corner of Canterbury Lane and Lily Cash Lane. Gary Marshke, DuPage Township applicant.
Madam Mayor, I would respectfully ask the board to recuse me from voting or taking part in the discussions pertaining to the township zoning requests.
Madam Mayor, I move to permit the recusal of Trustee Kelly from voting on the township's zoning request, matter PC 2303, and Project 403 dash 23.
I'll second that.
Okay. Trustee Lawler motion, second by Trustee Carpanzano.
Roll call vote.
Yes, please.
Yes. Trustee Carpanzano?
Yes.
Trustee Doris?
Yes.
Trustee Lawler?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Trustee Quintero?
Yes.
Trustee Zarate?
Yes.
All right. Trustee Kelly is recused. This application is for a special use permit for the Resource Center and Food Pantry of DuPage Township, came before the plan commission and received a negative recommendation. Since then, new information has come to light that may need to be reexamined by the plan commission. This matter is up for discussion tonight, and we have three options before you. First option is to accept the plan commission report, recommendation of PC 23 dot 03. Second would be to reject the plan commission's recommendation, and third would be to remand the matter back to the plan commission for further review based on additional information submitted. May I please have a motion regarding the plan commission's recommendation, PC 23 dot 03?
In light of staff's recommendation and given the new information received from the township since the plan commission, I am recommending that we remand the matter to the plan commission or village reconsideration by the plan commission and back to the village board.
Okay, motion to remand?
I will second.
Second motion to remand, roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Trustee Doris?
Yes.
Trustee Carpanzano?
Yes.
Trustee Lawler?
Yes.
Trustee Zarate?
Yes.
Trustee Quintero?
Yes.
All right. Public comments. So, Madam Clerk, have we received any comments in advance of tonight's meeting regarding this one item before the board?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have received 19 letters, email messages, voicemail messages regarding the food pantry issue. All of these messages had the same information, had the same objections, had the same concerns, which included the location, increased traffic, pedestrian and vehicular safety, duplication of existing resources, and the cost to taxpayers. So all 19 letters conveyed those concerns and their objection to the food pantry. Those letters will be entered into our minutes today.
Thank you. Is there anyone present tonight who would like to make a comment about the agenda item only at this time? All right, so we're gonna probably line up here, because I'm assuming there's gonna be multiples. Senator Ventura, why don't you start us out, please? Thank you.
If you could please give it to her, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much, and thank you for joining us. Absolutely. Hello, my name is Rachel Ventura. I am the state senator in the 43rd District, and I will not be here. I'll be in Springfield in the upcoming months, so I won't be able to attend the planning commission, but I did speak at the last planning commission. I'm here to encourage you to approve this zoning and whatever your guys is, I don't know how you guys do it, but I'm asking you to approve this. Both, we put state dollars, tax dollars into this food pantry, as well as federal dollars went into this. We believe that this is important. Food pantries are not just for the homeless, as we know in our state, that low and middle social economic families supplement their family groceries using the food pantries. One key factor to a child's success in school and academic performance can be directly tied to the access of food. During the first part of the 2023, the University of Illinois did 30 listening sessions, which were conducted across Illinois to collect feedback on how best to use food assistance. Over 300 community members attended the listening sessions, and more than 150 potential partners were identified in the study. According to the feedback provided at the listening sessions, food pantries were serving their intended purposes, and pantries that offered wraparound services such as housing support, family case management, job counseling, and nutrition coaching would help address the root causes of hunger. So I think it's really important that we invest in our communities, including food access, but also some of the wraparound services that the township is providing. So with that being said, I'll keep it short and sweet. I am asking you to go ahead and vote for this when it does come back before this council, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Board. You presumably have a piece of paper in front of you that shows Mark Heinley as one of the speakers. I did sign in this evening. My name is Mark Heinley. I am the DuPage Township Attorney, primarily charged with handling this matter. I appreciate that the board has already taken action this evening to remand the matter back to the plan commission. It is the township's sincere hope that the plan commission will review more carefully this time around the mountain of evidence in support of this proposal. We believe that every hurdle placed in front of the township has been patiently and thoroughly cleared. We believe the record to be clear. We look forward to the opportunity to make the record clearer yet. The township has concerns that a higher level of scrutiny has been applied to this particular project than other projects before you this evening. We certainly, I took note this evening, one of the matters, two of the proposals that you endorsed and favorably passed this night, this evening, are the types of facilities that pretty routinely provide shower services. I don't know whether that's the case, because I didn't do any sort of review of these, but certainly, the township's proposal in that regard, which drew a lot of comments, the township, part of the township's proposal in this $5 million project is two shower stalls and two laundry facilities. That drew a great amount of consternation, both reflected in public comments. It was, we believe, thinly veiled antipathy towards homeless and underprivileged persons, generally offered in the phrasing that we heard most frequently at our first plan commission hearing was concern about unknowns. We've taken great pains to address those unknowns by going into a tremendous amount of granular operational detail about how we're going to schedule and address the various concerns articulated by the village. We have drawn and redrawn and studied and restudied all of the matters raised as objections. Certainly understand that after a year of discussions between our respective bodies, there's nothing I'm going to say in these three minutes that is going to change any hearts and minds in this room or on this board, but I look forward to a more thorough opportunity in front of the plan commission at whatever time we come back before them to make clear beyond the shadow of a doubt that we satisfy the various zoning relief criteria set forth in the code. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it, as always.
Thank you, Councilor. Good evening.
Mayor, Board, and fellow neighbors, Bolingbrook residents. My name is Linda Ellis. I live at 317 Peach Street Court. I've lived in Bolingbrook for 30 years. I've lived in Town Center Park for 20 of those 30 years. I'm here tonight not to oppose the pantry and/or resource service, but just oppose the location in which it's decided to be built. I feel like there are many buildings, open buildings available, empty buildings available, that could accommodate a food pantry and resource service that wouldn't cost as much money so that, again, it could be put back into services for needy families and people who are looking for help in the Bolingbrook and surrounding community. I do feel that investing so much money in having a brand-new building is kind of, I feel like we're a throwaway society, that when something becomes old and not presently used or past used, that we forget that it can be recycled and brought into a new vision. I would love to see that happen. Also, too, the fact that I feel like in a congested area where there's so much traffic and so many vital areas of support for our community, why congest it even more? It really bothers me. I've had many sleepless nights concerned about this. I'm recently retired, so I'm home more. I'm wanting to enjoy my residence and surrounding area, and not thinking that that would take away, but yes, it would. Far more people back and forth or congested with traffic, deliveries, different things, you know? It just makes me feel uncomfortable in the fact that we don't have enough green space in our area. Bolingbrook is a beautiful community. I love it with all my heart, but I do feel as though we are trying to cram too many buildings, too many things of not natural or nature into an area where we need to spread out a little bit more and show more green space, less, what am I trying to say here, pollutants or, I don't know. I just would love to see a little bit more green in our area along with the progress that's taking place. I love that as well. I do hope that you find it in your I do hope that you find it in your hearts to understand where I'm coming from and consider the fact that we do not need to spend this large amount of money to erect a new building when there's so many other buildings that could accommodate this wonderful facility. I appreciate your listening to my comments and your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think my sheet was already given in, so I said, I think my sheet was already given in.
Just state your name.
Okay, sorry. Good evening, my name, my name is Vicente. I live at two five eight South Cranberry Street here in Bolingbrook. Madam Mayor, I know that you know, but for those of the board who don't, I'm also the general assistance administrator for DuPage Township. Wanted to focus my comments on one thing that I brought up back in October during the public comments at the Planning Commission meeting. And one of the things I wanted to address was the concern about traffic and the location of the proposed pantry and resource center. While I understand that the concern about traffic, the necessity of the village requiring a traffic study seems superfluous, because it seems that other projects around the village either didn't require any type of traffic study, and if they did, it doesn't seem like it had warranted any kind of major concern. I brought up the Starbucks that's being currently under construction on Bownton Road. While I do enjoy my caramel macchiato, I know myself and other residents lament the fact that the intersection of fifty-three and Bownton is bad enough as it is already, especially during the morning and evening commute. And when Starbucks opens, how much worse is it gonna get? I sometimes have seen Eastbound traffic on Bownton going as far back as Delaware Drive. More recently, when Cosmics opened, we saw all that traffic in place that has caused in that strip mall. I get that it's private property, but where are their concerns brought forth from the village staff over the traffic that may and is now causing? Granted, I know it's not bad right now, but it'll probably pick up again once the weather improves. And the concern over emergency services, I know myself and others have been awkwardly sat on Bownton Road between Brookwood and Weber, across from Target, when emergency vehicles from Fire Station Four go out on a call, and they seem to get through just fine. So, why all of a sudden a concern over traffic? Finally, Madam Mayor, if you're not aware, back in June and July of 2022, DuPage and Wheatland Townships entered into an intergovernmental agreement where residents of Wheatland Township can receive general assistance services from DuPage Township, as well as make use of the township food pantry. And if I'm not mistaken, you and a couple of the trustees are residents of Wheatland Township. So, approving a project such as this would not only be benefiting DuPage Township residents, the majority of which are from Bolingbrook, but this will also go helping your fellow neighbors in Wheatland Township. Therefore, I ask that you and the board, when the time comes, to approve the special use permit for DuPage Township. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ruth, excuse me, Ruth Blumentstein-Costello. I live at five oh five Thesen Chase Drive in Bolingbrook. In Bolingbrook, Illinois. We've been residents here for fifty-two years. And the only thing we missed when we first moved here was the fact that there wasn't a downtown of any sort that you could go to. So, shopping was done here, there, and everywhere at every other town around. So, my concern tonight is, if approved, what would the hours of operation for families and small children to partake in the pantry? Also, what would be the open hours for showers? Are the showers available when the pantry is open when children are present? I would hope not. I would be appalled if any child or anyone were accidentally exposed to this. What measures would be put in place to ensure this would not happen? And would there be a manager overseeing the facility at or all hours of operation? This area of town is where people enjoy family time, is in close proximity to our high schools and elementary schools. Is this really what you want for your town, especially when approximately two miles down the road, we have a pantry which has been successfully serving patrons for years? This would be an expensive duplication of efforts, I do believe. Bolingbrook was not blessed with a downtown when first incorporated, but rather fertile farmland. We moved here fifty-two years ago. So, the village leaders, in their wisdom, built its own downtown on a parcel of land bounded by West Briar Cliff, Lancaster, Lily Cashay, and Canterbury Road. And included in those boundaries are village hall, a courtroom, police and fire facilities, public works, state-of-the-art library, an open stage for village plays, outdoor concerts, included, and included a hill where you could sit with a blanket or bring your own chairs for those family fun activities. Also, they created a sleigh-riding toboggan hill for the residents' kids to enjoy, truly a place where many in this room may have enjoyed at one time or another. It was just fun to be in a small, to have a small hill where you could actually use a sleigh in these flatlands. This is truly our village downtown, and millions were spent to create this. I would sincerely hope that with all the traffic that's going to be brought about by all the trucks and everything else coming in, that we really should rethink what we're doing here.
Time's up, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Time's up, three minutes are up.
Oh, time's up, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Jackie Trenier. I'm a Will County board member. I could give my address, it is public, but by law, I am not required to. I do want to state that my family moved here in nineteen seventy. We've been here over fifty years. We have four generations of my family that have lived in this community. From time to time, I remember as a young child, my father needing assistance and getting free cheese from the federal government. At that point in time, there were no food pantries, there was no township building that you could go to for help as an area of last resort. I'm very grateful that we have that now, and I will state for the record that I am a township employee. I have brought with me tonight some charts that were submitted with our most recent response of the litany of responses we have been asked to give, that very clearly shows that of DuPage Township, over seventy-five percent of the people that used our food pantry in 2023 were Bolingbrook residents. Why we would ask Bolingbrook residents to travail to Romeoville to an industrial park that is very dangerous, that does not have ADA accessories, American Disabilities Act accessories, is beyond me. Recently, as a county board member, I was forced to accept the fact that our county courthouse was being demolished. That was a building built in nineteen sixty-nine. I did want to save that building, because I saw a need to repurpose it and a value to that building. The value to the building where we currently house our food pantry, there is no value. It was a truck warehouse. It was not meant to be a food pantry. It had a trough going down the middle of it when I came into the township as an employee, a trough that employees had to cross over every single day, many, many times. It is not a fit building for anyone to get their services in with any amount of dignity. As for the issues in our community with traffic, I can talk about the car wash on Bownton Road this past weekend, where they had to close the entrance, one of the entrances to it, because there was so much traffic. They found a way to get the cars into the car wash without blocking up Bownton Road. I can't say the same for the Starbucks that's on the corner of Remington and Fifty-three. I've seen that clogging up the street many times, and I won't even talk about Cosmic. What I will say about the planning and zoning and hearing that I attended, it was a disgrace. I attend these every month as a Will County board member, and the one that was held here was embarrassing to me as a county board member. Mr. Ali, the chair of that committee-
Thank you, Ms. Trenier, your time is up.
Should recuse himself, because he has some definite conflicts of interest.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Barbara, I already gave you my sheet, Marv. My name is Barbara Parker, and I am the DuPage Township clerk, and I'm here to talk about the favorable results that our food pantry being in Bolingbrook could help. This past December, I had the honor of helping some kids from one of our elementary schools on the east side of town, and I got to see firsthand the need of some of those children in that school. It was disgraceful that we live in a country or even a town like Bolingbrook, and people need that kind of help, and there's people here that are against it. I want to talk about the traffic. The place where we plan to put our food pantry is zoned for a supermarket. Don't tell me the food pantry is gonna produce more traffic than what a supermarket would in and out of that area. Where was the uproar when the warehouses were put in right next door to a middle school and tractor trailers do come down Lily Cash? If you'd go and look, you'd see them a couple of times a week. We have made arrangements to limit our truck traffic there, and I think everybody should vote in favor of this food pantry. I hope eventually the village board does the right thing and votes yes for our food pantry in the current space where we want it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Harvey. I live at two thirty-nine Tecumseh Drive in Bolingbrook, and I've lived there for around twenty-seven years, and I am very much in favor of the new food pantry. I actually do volunteer at the current food pantry in Romeoville, so I know that we need a new one. Our current food pantry is too small, so that only several people can fit in it at a time, causing people to wait in lines and in their cars in extreme weather like we have now. That is not good. It is also, the small size makes it very difficult, if not impossible, for people in wheelchairs and with other challenges to get through. In addition, the food pantry needs more storage space. The current location is in a warehouse in an industrial area. I feel uncomfortable there, especially as a woman. Because there is not enough parking, I have to park a block away, which if I was in a neighborhood or a commercial area, I would feel fine. As a volunteer, I've had the privilege to help my fellow residents, my fellow people from Bolingbrook. They come from all walks of life, all ages, genders, ethnicities, and social economic backgrounds. They aren't these scary, unknown people that everybody talks about. They are ordinary people like myself, like all of us here, who have just come across some hard times. For the most part, they are very appreciative of the food they receive. And the truth is, the number of people needing food assistance is growing, and the amount of food assistance available isn't growing enough to meet the needs. And no matter how many food pantries there are around there, they are not enough, because people have to visit different ones several times a month to feed their families. So, it is not valid to say, oh, there's one down the street that's working fine. That's true, and there's more need than everyone here can handle. So, that being said, too, the unfortunate reality is that many Americans, many residents are one car accident, one medical emergency, one divorce, one lost job away from needing food assistance. My hope is that the village of Bolingbrook understands the reality and takes a proactive, rather than reactive, approach to the need for food assistance. I'm very proud to be a resident of Bolingbrook and appreciate the many benefits that Bolingbrook has provided for my family, and we love it. We love living in a diverse community, attending good schools, enjoying wonderful parks, great park district programs and sports programs, and an incredible library with incredible resources, et cetera. But I would also like to be proud of Bolingbrook for being a place where people's needs are understood and met, and even when, and especially when, they need something as basic as food to feed themselves and their families. And I would like to also add, the idea of repurposing buildings is a good one, but keep in mind, you'd have to close down the food pantry to try and attempt to fix so many problems with it. And again, it was not gonna change the location. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hannah Hernandez. They won't give you my address, but I live across from Ikea in the promenade, so traffic is not lost on me. I deal with it every day. I'm here to support the food pantry. Honestly, I just recently learned about this. I'm shocked that it's even controversial. I think I'm gonna say what is between the lines and not being said today, but I don't think this is about traffic. I think this is about the stigma and the biases a lot of people have about low-income people and families. And like it was said earlier, you don't have to be homeless to use the food pantry. I grew up in Romeoville, West Lake, near Lakewood Falls. I had a four-bedroom house. My mom got addicted to pills. No one would have known that we were food insecure. I can't tell you the amount of times I went to the Jewel on Weber Road, and my mom in the middle of the night had to leave our cart there because she didn't have enough money on her card to pay for our food. That is not something I would want any other kid to have to go through. Being low-income is hard enough. To have to make people feel bad and humiliated by it is even worse. Again, I can't believe this is controversial. There is twenty percent of our residents who are food insecure. Fifty percent, nearly fifty percent of the students in Illinois are eligible for free and reduced-price lunch. My son goes to school with probably many of the kids in our, on our town that are food insecure, because we're on the east side, and my understanding is that is where there is the greatest need. I think about a day like today, where school was closed because of an ice storm, and a lot of kids probably didn't get to eat today, because the meal that they depend on, because they get breakfast and lunch at school, is there. I'm sorry if traffic would even be a concern to you, but why? But don't you care more about feeding kids and families? I really don't have much more to say than that, but I think it's really, this town values diversity. That's why my family and I moved here, true diversity, not tokenism, true diversity, and uplifting our families. And we can't ever expect to break cycles of poverty if we don't have resources like food pantries that are truly accessible to families, not just in a reasonable vicinity, but truly accessible in their town, being supported by their neighbors. They need food to live, they need food to be educated. This should even be a conversation right now. I'm disappointed that it is, but please, please pass the food pantry. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here for a while.
Good evening.
My name is Peggy McMillan. Do I, do my answer?
Thank you.
I don't mind, I just-
No, no, you're fine.
Okay. Lived here for almost forty-six years, and I'm not gonna repeat everything that's been said at all the meetings that have happened, because the facts were presented, and the Planning Commission made a decision and didn't accept it. I didn't know today that this was going to happen, so obviously, that changes a little bit. But it is now up to the village of Bolingbrook to make a decision that will affect the residents, safety, our taxes, and the traffic. And the thing about the traffic, why it is important? Eighty thou, eight, sorry, eight thousand car accidents at Canterbury and Lily Cash since two thousand and eighteen. How many? Eighty. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Eighty, eighty accidents since two thousand and eighteen is a lot more accidents than we have to have, and there were ten walkers that were also in accidents there. Nobody that I've heard at any of the meetings have ever said, we don't need a food pantry. What people have said is, we don't want it in that location. It is not a good place. There's a fire department that can't get into Canterbury when they have to, or get off of Canterbury, because there's traffic, and you're adding more traffic. Traffic is important. It is. To the people that have lived here, it is. And I'm not saying we shouldn't give you food. I'm saying that we should put it in a place that's safe. The other food pantries are all in industrial areas for a reason.
Making eye contact with me, so I think you're talking to me.
Let's just, please, let's, you've got your time.
That's thirteen accident years since twenty eighteen.
We can't, we can't have engagement, please. Please have, we cannot continue to have that. Please go ahead. We can't dialogue like that. This is her time, her comments, we have to respect that, just like you would respect it, please.
She was dead staring at me.
It's okay, next, please. It's okay. Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carolina Strack and I've lived in Bolingbrook since 2016. I'm also going to pass on my address. Bolingbrook, a place to grow. It's our village's motto and approving the food pantry and resource center would do just that. It would help the nearly 6,000 Bolingbrook residents who live in poverty to grow. Bringing this vital resource would bring necessary resources to thousands of Bolingbrook residents that address the social determinants of health that disproportionately impact individuals living in poverty. This project is an opportunity for Bolingbrook to align itself directly with major federal government objectives like Healthy People 2030, which focuses on improving the conditions in the environments where people are born, live, learn, work, play, worship, and age that affect a range of health and quality of life outcomes and risks. The selected location of the project is actually perfect. And it has special importance as it acknowledges the geographical and transportation barriers experienced by individuals. And it is a necessary resource to be centrally located and accessible to the population they serve. The proposed project is quite literally at the crossroads of the census tracts in Bolingbrook that have the highest poverty levels. The surrounding tracts around this location have poverty ranging from 13.9% to 20%. And the Bolingbrook average is 8%. It couldn't be a more perfect location that triangulates need and access. It's a rare opportunity to bring wraparound supports to children, families, and seniors in our village with state and federal funding, not local funding. The village does not have to spend any money on this. Supporting this project is an opportunity to be leaders who support building and uplifting their community. It's the opportunity to embody our village's motto. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you fill out one of these forms? Yes, please.
My name is Judy Broderway. I have lived in Bolingbrook since 1970 and have been deeply involved in the village, especially when I became a senior at the Levy Center. Anyone who comes to a large activity at the Levy Center knows that there is a lack of parking at the center. There's a lack of additional handicap spots. Now, in my younger years, when I was in my 60s, I could walk from the Public Works Garage, but now I need a handicap sticker. And there are very few handicap spots. The seniors are required to arrive early. We come as early as two hours before the event, park in the street, and walk to the center. The intent is to close the Romieville pantry. Township vehicles and trucks already parked at that site will be moved to the Canterbury site. The supervisor has already said that pantry employees will park in the Levy Center, eliminating senior spaces. The second item I would like to bring up about this project is the lack of transparency. And we really haven't talked about the budget for this building and the site. The site is $695,000. It is currently zoned commercial and the township is only buying half of the site that has currently been there as empty land since the Village Incorporated. Now, by putting, buying that property for $695,000, they're only buying half of it. The half along Canterbury and Lily Cash. The site that's near, closest to the fire station will remain vacant and up for sale and probably not available. A general obligation bond is being sold. This 10-year mortgage will cost the taxpayers approximately $70,000 a year for the next 10 years to pay off the property. No public hearings were held before this sale of the bonds or the beginning of the sales, the intent was signed off on. It was signed off in January of 2023 and not brought to attention of the public for a public hearing.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Well, I am against putting the township food pantry at that location. I think there's a better spot closer than the township.
Thank you.
I'm Liz Campbell, servant of the Lord Jesus Christ. Red, yellow, black, and white, they're all precious in God's sight. And I am, as the second lady said, up there is just the location. And I'm definitely not, as a school board member of 26 years, is that, and I do know we have 70 different languages and we have a lot of food insecurity. I worked for Catholic Charities, head start for a long time, and I know what that is. And so I'm not against that. I'm on the lower whacker, serving the homeless every other day. So I'm not a part of not knowing that. Reality is that there are a lot of hurting people out here, as far as the food. And I think, as the young lady said, that I don't think with Bolingbrook being as diverse as we are to the mayor and to all these other elected officials that are here, and you elected officials already, who are pushing this forward, is that I don't think that that's the care. I don't think that anyone is saying that this not, it's not a need and it's not a reality. Because we live in a society, and then if we close our eyes and say that it's not a need, then we all have a problem. So we all need to go back to the table. But what I'm saying is that I think that what I am hearing people say is that the location that they have, whether you agree or disagree with that, with that, those items that people brought, and let us know, we got young people here tonight and look how some of us are acting. We remember that we are the example, that we should be the example to these young people. So what will they do? How will they elect politics? How will they look out for those? He said, "When you've done it to the least of them, you've done it to them. You are serving God," and that's what I believe. So that's what I believe. The cares and concerns is that it's the location. So when it goes back to the planning commission, and these are the people that we have, then I hear Bolingbrook saying, and that's what it is, it's about the people. We're talking about the people. Our wisdom is the Constitution for the people? Then let's hear what the people have to say. So come in a kind, humble, loving God and loving your neighbor as yourself, that we respect each other, and that we even agree to disagree, that we still look out for those who are less fortunate than we are? If it's all about that, then let's go back to the table in love. And say, "Love your enemies. Pray for those that disagree. Pray for those that disagree." If you have true love, then you love those people that don't look like, feel like, and act like you. So again, I'm just asking us to consider those things, that it is a reality. But what I hear the people are saying is that they are concerned about that location, whether the reason for the location is lined up with your plan or not. Let's hear what people are saying. Let's hear one another. Let's truly love one another. And when it goes back to the planning commission, if you come back to this meeting, let's go to the planning commission if that's where you want to be. And let's not speak against each other because they disagree. Whatever reason you think that it is, then you come back with what you believe and you show the example of how to be diligent, how to be loving and respectful and kind, so that these young people that are here tonight, that are in each one of these schools, whether it's Wheaton Town, whether it's DuPage Town, whether it's Lockport Township, that we all come together. And if we don't come together, it's not going to be so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Hello, my name is Frehinar. You should have my sheet up there. So I came here, again, to talk about the food pantry because I was at that planning commission meeting and there's been some issues with the location. But the planning commission really has really thoroughly shown why this is the best location. They've looked at plenty of other locations and they've done two separate traffic studies. So I actually am very concerned about traffic in the area, personally in Bolingbrook. One of the scariest numbers on this whole sheet to me was that the motor fuel tax has gone up 21.5%. That means people have been driving in Bolingbrook 20% more than they were last year. So what are we doing to make Bolingbrook a more walkable community where we aren't driving so much? But adding a food pantry is not going to add to that problem because the only problem with the traffic with the food pantry was a few trucks that deliver to it, just like they deliver to our grocery stores every day. So, and that place was already zoned for a grocery store. So this really is the perfect place to put a food pantry. We've looked everywhere. We just really need a food pantry there. Every time we have to go to one of these meetings and defend it, we are spending more and more money. We are, you know, holding on to that lease and that land is sitting empty. We have people that are going all the way down. Like we said, 75% of the people going to this food pantry live in Bolingbrook. So if we want to lower traffic, the best way to do that would be putting the food pantry in Bolingbrook so that we're not driving, especially through, you know, how do you get to Romieville? Well, one of the best ways is to go south through 53. Well, that's like one of the busiest places. 53 is so crowded. So if we move the food pantry where more people are going to be closer to it, that's going to decrease traffic. Because, like I said, one of the most important things to me when I moved here was how bad the traffic is. I live right by Weber Road. It's horrendous. It is so bad and we added things like cosmetics without improving the sidewalks at all. That is something I'm very not in favor of, is adding more and more drive-throughs. But this isn't a drive-through. This is a food pantry for people. It is way more important than all those other drive-throughs that we're just going through like that without even needing to approve them. So thank you guys so much for coming out here. Thank you for everybody that listened and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diane Klepper. I live at 561 Redwood Road on the east side of town. Been a proud Bolingbrook resident for longer than I care to admit. My family and I first moved here because it was affordable. We stay here because of reasons like this discussion. A village board like yourselves, it takes in the comments of every member in town and listens to what your residents have to say. And I have something to say about this food pantry. I do not care for the location. I think there's going to be issues with public safety response from the police department in case of emergency. The police parking lot exits to Canterbury. And from that, you either go right or left. That's your gateway for emergency services for the village. I understand another traffic study's been done. I haven't seen the results of it, but hopefully there will be some sort of resolution to this issue. I cannot see emergency services trying to respond to an emergency that could happen any time of day if there's a semi truck trying to make a right blocking both lanes' traffic to drop off a delivery. I can't see that over at Canterbury and Lily Cash. Those are concerns that I have. I also have concerns about my tax bill, the tax implications that this is going to put on every resident of Bolingbrook because I know that 75% of the users of the food pantry are Bolingbrook residents because the township sits squarely mostly in the village boundaries of Bolingbrook, few outside Cotler towns. Those are my concerns. I would hope that you, as a village, will listen to what the planning commission says, but I think the residents that have gone to the DuPage Township meetings have had their comments and concerns dismissed because they don't attend enough meetings. You are our elected officials. We should really, in reality, have to attend zero meetings and know that you are doing the right thing for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Someone else is going? Is that what you got?
No, you're going. No, no, no. She's going to go first. Sorry, Carol.
Thank you.
She's going to go first, sorry.
My name is Reem Townsend. I'm here in support of the food pantry. I am also a DuPage Township trustee. At the request of the village, we did a traffic study and it was, it was decided that it would be fine to have the food pantry and resource center there. We did a second one. They said the same thing. Someone here mentioned, "Let the people speak." We collected signatures to show how many people support the proposed food pantry and resource center, and we collected almost 700 signatures. The people have spoken. I want to address parking. I think that one person misheard that employees would not park at the Levy Center. In fact, with the food pantry, there could be an additional 30-ish parking spots, which seniors could potentially utilize. And I want to address the safety concerns that I've heard. I'm a mom. I have young children. And I find it very harmful to assume that a food pantry and a resource center could be dangerous to our community in that location. Poor people are not more violent or scary than non-poor people. The proposed location is down the street from the police station. I don't think there could be a more safe location. As a volunteer at the food pantry, I've seen the people. They look no different than everyone in this room. There's children, there's the elderly, there are families. I hope that everything gets worked out in the zoning committee where they do recommend a special use permit. I hope that the board then approves the special use permit so we can build the food pantry and resource center and give this community what it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Okay. My name's Carol Penning. I'm a resident of the village of Bolingbrook since 1977. I live at 330 Shield Court and my information was submitted up front. I also sent in a letter, which I had hoped would be read in its entirety, but my main interest, I would have actually been interested to hear what all of those comments were in their entirety in those letters. So again, I state I'm disappointed. But I will just share with you that I submitted a request for a Freedom of Information Act back on October 29th of 2023, at which time I had several requests, including the number of accidents that occurred at the location of Canterbury Lane and Lily Cash. I received a full report, which included, it doesn't go into detail about what the accidents were, but the majority of them were vehicles and then there were 10 walking accidents. And it lists the names of the officers that were at that location. There was over, there were approximately 84 accidents over a period of 1/30/2018 till My point in bringing that up is, again, people are not opposed to the project and I wish DuPage Township would come up with an alternative, just an alternative location and not be so set on this. I am very concerned about the safety of not only the people, you know, the increase of more traffic that could increase the number of accidents and, God forbid, a fatality. Now, I am just saying that I'm also concerned about the employees of DuPage Township who will work at their pantry, who have to walk across the street every day because they will not be able to park over there because there's limited parking places. You see the ice and the weather that has been. Can you imagine them walking to and from every day, well, when the pantry is open? And the possibility that when they're walking across the street, that there could be an incident that occurs. We're just increasing the volume of incidents of accidents. Please, DuPage Township, find another location. We implore you. And I thank you for your time this evening and thank you for Mayor Mary Bossa for allowing me to speak back here with the microphone. And I just want to say, God bless everyone and God bless all of DuPage Township. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board and everyone here. It's wonderful that everybody showed up to share their opinions. I have been to the pantry in Romieville. I haven't heard anybody mention anything, much about it, but I took, I don't know, I think it was 1,000 pounds worth of potatoes over there a couple of months ago. And there was probably, and I didn't count, but I would say at least 50 cars in line.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board and everyone here. It's wonderful that everybody showed up to share their opinions. I have been to the pantry in Romeoville. I haven't heard anybody mention anything, much about it, but I took, I don't know, I think it was 1,000 pounds worth of potatoes over there a couple of months ago. And there was probably, and I didn't count, but I would say at least 50 cars in line, maybe much more than that, I don't know. But there was, there was a lot of people waiting for food and I'm glad I was able to help. But if we have that kind of traffic volume at this location on Canterbury, it will be a real issue. And there are other locations around town that would be much more suitable. There's been a, there used to be a pantry up on Veterans Parkway and the warehouses. There are also existing pantries here in town that instead of spending a $12 million bond to build a facility, that we could probably take 1% of that and help the existing pantries in town to have a little bit more food that are run by volunteers and, and are not a burden to the taxing authority here. So, or the community. But the point is that there's a lot of traffic at this facility in Romeoville and that would make it a real nightmare over on Canterbury. I'm not saying we don't need a pantry. I'm not saying it's a good thing, but I, what I'm, it's not a good thing. I'm saying that this is a really, really bad location and, and we need to consider putting it somewhere else, repurposing a building, using a warehouse or whatever. We have the ability to have this kind of a facility other than right in the heart where all the traffic is. I was following a pace bus on my way over here this evening. So there's a lot of different traffic that goes on there and, and I, they couldn't possibly, if they developed that whole lot into a parking lot, they couldn't fit all the cars that they, that they work with, other people who are coming to get assistance. So nothing scary about it. It's just that this is really a bad location and I think it will harm the community much more than what it will help. But there are other suitable places around town that they could use. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board regarding this issue? Can you please come up? If there are any others, please just line up in the essence of time. And please make sure you fill out one of the forms.
Thanks for the reminder. First I'm doing this.
What's going on? My name is Mirage Yalom, 816 Metropolitan Avenue, Bolingbrook, Illinois, 60490. Proud resident of Bolingbrook for about 30 plus years. I'm going to, you definitely want to say thank you all for your opinions, I, along with other individuals. First I experienced actually deliver, talk, converse, hear the stories of the unhoused and the migrants ever since COVID-19 had started. So I personally have, you know, conversed, been relayed, even back here, from my press case to the country and whatnot. So there is definitely is a need. There is definitely is a need for a food pantry. However, being this, to my attention recently, right, we also have to look at all factors, right? So I'm always an open mind about food pantry, yes, but I think it has to be an open forum, meaning like from a security point of view, from a traffic point of view, from a safety point of view, because we, I have a newborn, right? Recently adopted, I should say, I should say, but I'm thinking about it as a father point of view now. So with that being said, I want to emphasize everyone does have an right to have access to food, water, et cetera. No doubt about that. However, in order to solve a problem, you got to take a big step back and avoid other problems that may occur. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Thank you to everyone who took time to, out of their evening, to come in and comment and share your comments regarding this topic. It looks like the board has voted to remand back to Plan Commission. Any other comments from the board? Counselor?
Madam Mayor, I did have a, a lot of comments, but I think I'll hold them because my comments related to the 12-page letter we received with the chart held up at 12:37 this afternoon, which been, which has been typical of the submissions by the township to the, to the village and to the village staff and who need a fair opportunity to assess the compliance with the village code. I won't go into it, although I have to tell the people here and counsel that the 12-page dissertation on discrimination is insulting at best to this board and to this Plan Commission when all you have to do is take a look at this board and this Plan Commission and not talk about discrimination. The, 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 excuse me, I didn't interrupt anybody. The accusations and insinuations in this 12-page dissertation about what we should, what the board and what the Plan Commission do, that should do, is again insulting. And I will not comment on this. We'll comment on this at the appropriate time and place. I should note, the agenda for the Township Board meeting tomorrow night has an executive session scheduled with pending or imminent litigation. So we'll, we'll see what happens at the Township meeting, but we are going through what we always go through in reviewing a submission. We send it to the Plan Commission. They have hearings. They study it. Staff recommends, and then it comes back to the board. In this case, it's come to the board incomplete, disjointed, submissions coming after the Plan Commission. Well, the Plan Commission is there for a purpose. Our ordinances say the Plan Commission evaluates and recommends to the board. You can't recommend a plan that's 65%, 75%, 90% done, and then new submissions come in. Today, at 12:37, we got this. And people can shake their head all they want, we got this at 12:37 today, 12 pages of how we are wrong. Well, I hope this doesn't go to litigation. I hope it doesn't. I hope this can be done in the appropriate manner by submissions to the Plan Commission. Plan Commission recommends to this body, and this body will make a decision based on the law and ordinances, not on lawyers' submissions, a few hours before the board meeting. So the chart that was held up, yeah, we have it, and now the board has it, that we got today at 20 to 1. So I, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I don't want to go on. I sound like a lawyer.
Thank you. No. Thank you. All right. And now, public comments. Madam Clerk, have you received any general comments in advance of tonight's meeting regarding anything not on this evening's agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have received three comments regarding the call to the board to create a resolution having to do with a ceasefire. Would you like me to read them?
Yes, please.
From Marty Larick. Ms. Barton, I would like to see a resolution crafted that calls for Hamas to release its hostages and to surrender. There can be no peace with the terrorist group Hamas in control of the innocent people in Gaza. Second one is from Samir Oday, and I apologize if I pronounced that incorrectly. Dear Village Board members, I trust this message finds you in good health. I'm writing to you as a concerned member of our community to bring attention to the grave humanitarian crisis unfolding in Gaza. The recent atrocities and ongoing violence have left countless innocent lives in distress, and it is with a heavy heart that I urge our community to take a stand and extend our support. I kindly request the board to consider passing a resolution expressing our collective concern for the humanitarian crisis in Gaza and the violence that has led to such devastating consequences. This resolution could serve as a powerful testament to our community's commitment to peace, justice, and the well-being of all humanity regardless of their geographical location. By passing this resolution, we would be sending a message of solidarity and empathy. It is our duty as a community to stand up against injustice and advocate for the well-being of those who are suffering. I understand that the board has various responsibilities and considerations, but I believe that our collective voice can make a difference. This resolution would not only reflect the values of our community, but also contribute to the larger global call for peace and humanitarian aid. Thank you for your time and consideration.
The third one is from Faye Rodriguez. Hello, my name is Faye Rodriguez, and I am your constituent. We as citizens of humanity want the resolution regarding our brothers and sisters in Palestine and Israel passed as soon as possible. We have lost our trust in our politicians in the Senate and the Congress and the President. We come here today as your constituents, asking you to have the courage to do what is right on behalf of our Palestinian and Israeli brothers and sisters. We want the violence to end immediately. We believe if we can get this done, we can show our government that we have the courage to do what is right, and so should they. Thank you for your consideration. That's it. Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board regarding anything not on this evening's agenda? Can you please come up? So same process as those before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have your name on one of these forms?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nizam Khatib, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be and hear and speak, although I don't really live in the town of Bolingbrook, but I do have very close friends that I come and visit regularly. I would like to talk about the human suffering. I would like to, to believe that the city of Bolingbrook stands by justice, freedom, and equality anywhere. Since it's been a week since the day of Martin Luther King, I would like to quote him where he says, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." As you all know, destruction and killings that is going on in Gaza now is unacceptable. It is a genocide. I would like to request from the city of Bolingbrook and its board to stand by the people of Gaza and demand a ceasefire now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Shinab. I practice here in Romeoville. I come to the hospital in Bolingbrook. I come and buy stuff from the mall. I do everything in Bolingbrook, even though I don't live in Bolingbrook, but your town rocks, and I'm so proud of you. Imagine Naperville comes to Bolingbrook, take your house, bomb your place, take the hospital, take the mall, take the board, take everything. You call Romeoville, you call Woodridge, you call Lisle, Claude Burridge, nobody cares. This is what's going on now in Gaza. What we really need is a ceasefire. If we don't speak, our politicians, nobody cares. Nobody do anything. What we really want is the board to help us, to please take our word forward. Nobody else has helped us except us. We have, if there is a say, you itch your back with your own fingers. So here we are. So please listen to us. Please help us out to ceasefire this genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Board. Good evening, our neighbors and friends, of course. My name is Wyatt Kawash. I've been living in Bolingbrook at Bloomfield West for 21 years. I raise the great family. I have my wife in here, Sana. And again, I'm really a concerning citizen because here it's a great thing that we are talking about food pantry. You know, we having dialogue, yes and no. But unfortunately, the people of Gaza and the West Bank, they don't have that leverage. They don't have that luxury. They are under bombardment every single second. They don't have that water that we have in our tables in front of us. They don't have food. They are sleeping in the streets. Israel has been violating every single human rights in the book. What are we? We are a human. Here, I'm a great, you know, I'm a Palestinian American. I've been in this country for 48 years, and I'm proud to be in this country, and I'm proud to be an American too. I have that luxury to be here. But what happened to my people who are living still in the West Bank and in Gaza and in northern Palestine, they didn't have that luxury. So as a human being, we need to stand for each other. Unfortunately, our politician, they're ignoring these issues. You know, it's not about, you know, money. It's about a human being that they have the right to live just like anybody else in the world. So people in Gaza, now we have about over 25,000 people are dying or killed. We have also in the West Bank that's supposed to be, or did there is a peace treaty between Israel and the Palestinian Authority, it's still also every day they are taking their homes, they're demolishing their homes because you know what? It's an apartheid states. They don't really follow the world law to implement the human rights. So I'm calling on the board, please try to implement a ceasefire and vote for it so we can also bring it to Washington so they can vote and pressure Israel for peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone, Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees. My name is Anish Basir. I live in 631 Coche Circle, and I've lived in Bolingbrook for over 10 years of my life. Coming up, I had some things to talk about regarding Palestine, but the people before me have brought it up, and so I am just going to continue to what they say. People are dying. That is the state of the fact because people, over 20,000, maybe even more now because we are debating a ceasefire for a place that has been taken over by Israel for the past 75 years. This is before October 7th. This is before Hamas's first attack. This was before anything that the Western media or anyone else is trying to spin, just trying to uplift and say, oh, Israel is defending itself. They want the hostages. Do you know that the Israeli occupational forces, they have killed so many people, they have bombed the entire area just, and how is that protecting the hostages? How is that causing Hamas to stop? If anything, that's going to martyr and kill more Palestinians, and that's going to cause more Hamas to occur. So while you are all sitting here debating, twiddling your thumbs, debating on whether to have a ceasefire or not, there are more lives that are being cost as we speak. No more. Genocide Joe, every politician who is paid off by Israel needs to stand up. This isn't about money. This is about human lives, the human lives that are constantly lost on a daily basis. And how I know this is from a goddamn social media app, not from, not from news outlets, not Fox News, not CNN, neither of them, because all of them are paid off. And I am sick and tired of this, this constant debate for the past 75 years. Where are we? Are we not human beings? Do I have to scream into the void just to get the message to get through to you? Because at the end of the day, we are human beings. It doesn't matter if you are Palestinian or Israeli or white or African or whatever religion you follow, or your sexual orientation, or your gender identity. We are human beings. Ceasefire now. Genocide Joe, to the people who is sitting here, I plead with all of my heart. Write up a proposal. Bring it up to Congress. Do whatever you can within your power. That is why you are here, for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Hello. Well, I'm Hannah Hernandez. So I actually wrote an email today to the trustees, so I think I'm just about this. So I'll just read my email, but I will say, I grew up with, I'm Jewish, and I grew, my best friend growing up, her family was from Palestine. That is pure coincidence. We grew up in Romeoville, and her family used to laugh. I was the Jewish girl in their house. I cherish all the time I spent in their home. Her family is dying in Gaza right now. So this is the email I sent today. I was pleased to hear the town was considering a vote on the Gaza ceasefire resolution. While I recognize it was more of a symbolic act than anything, I feel it's incredibly powerful for Bolingbrook to do so, acting as a moral role model for other towns and underscoring the critical issue of human rights and combating Islamophobia and antisemitism. Needless to say, I'm extremely disappointed to hear that the resolution is no longer being considered. being considered, and I would like to understand why, as well as join the growing call from Bolingbrook residents to add a Gaza ceasefire resolution to the February 6 meeting and demand that you call for a ceasefire. This is an incredible moment in time for people and governments to take action and be on the right side of history. Saving lives isn't controversial, and standing in solidarity with Palestinians is not an international issue. This is of local concern. We have Palestinian residents whose families are dying. We have a six-year-old little boy 20 minutes from us who died in a hate crime directly because of what is happening. We have hate towards Palestinians and Jews growing in our community, and our tax dollars are being used to fund this genocide. If our town truly values diversity, human rights, and the right to safety for all people, especially children, Bolingbrook must make a statement and demand a ceasefire. As symbolic as the demand may be, it would make a difference in the lives of many residents, reassuring us that we chose the right home for our families, that Bolingbrook is a place that puts human life before politics and offers a safe space physically, emotionally, and ideologically for all people. This resolution might not mean much on the national or international stage, but it will speak loudly locally about our community's values and strengthen our collective investment in diversity. Please, let's make sure that we're on the right side of history and can proudly say that we, as a community, stood up for human rights. My family died in concentration camps in Hungary. You trace my ancestry, it stops at Ellis Island because they were refugees. My family growing up, we said, they said they didn't know. We all know, and we should be stopping it.
Thank you.
I'm also Palestinian-American, first generation. I live in Bloomfield West as well, so I'm happy to hear that there's more Palestinians over there. I just want to let everyone know that the reason that this is so important, that a ceasefire resolution is important, is because there are people directly related, like myself, to people back in Palestine that are being killed, that are being displaced, that have illegal settlements going on, and that it also comes back here home, because in Bolingbrook, almost $900,000 of our tax dollars goes to Israel, goes to the weapons in Israel to kill Palestinian, innocent Palestinians. So there was no, I just want to make it clear as well, there was nothing on the agenda to call for a ceasefire, but people are actively working on that, so I'm encouraging the, everyone here and listening, to please reach out to board members, reach out to the mayor, and encourage them to put forth a ceasefire resolution that was sent to them earlier this week. I already had a meeting with two trustees, and we need a lot more education, a lot more people to come forward to do that, so we can get it on the agenda for February 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address the board? I think it's appropriate. I did write a statement, and yes, we did receive the proposed language. However, our agendas get published the week before, so anyway. And I think this is the right time. It's fitting at a time when the freedom of the world is imperiled, that the village of Bolingbrook should give special recognition to the memory of those who sacrificed their lives for the cause of freedom, giving credence to our soldiers and service members throughout the world, and pray for peace, peace that is lasting, peace that is permanent. We pray for peace for Israelis, Palestinians, and every ethnic group and religion. We recognize that the problem is the extremist, not the people, Israeli or Palestinian. Here in Bolingbrook, we have always taken a stand against discrimination from any source, against any people. We certainly value the lives of Palestinians, Israelis, and all those caught in terrible wars, whether in Israel, Gaza, Ukraine, Russia, or other parts of the world. I would like to take a minute to reflect, of reflection and silence, thinking about all human life and praying that the world can be at peace. Thank you again for all those who came this evening. We will now go to trustee comments. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I served on the Plan Commission for five years before joining the Village Board in July of 1995, so the process that we're going through is a responsible matter, and I think having everyone come out, both to the Plan Commission meetings, and we've also had people speak, residents speak in the past about issues after Plan Commission and presented before the Village Board, so this process is working. It's important to hear all perspectives and all concerns. So thank you for everyone for coming out tonight and sharing your concerns. On a slightly different note, in supporting community, there is, it's been a little cold recently, and everyone's been affected, including myself in some way. The First Presbyterian Church of DuPage, which has been in existence for over 190 years on Weber Road, is in need of furnace repair. So they're doing, and some other items, and so they're doing a book sale and bake sale this Friday and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in the fellowship hall. Please come out and support that community who does a lot for all of us for 190 years. And I would ask for your support to come out and join them. And the bake sale, I've attended bake sales in the past, they're pretty, pretty good, but the book, and there'll be other items offered there, but this is our chance to support each other and support our community. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor, I think this board should go for the books and not the baked goods.
Just to, just to make a point, I have a figure to keep up.
Round is a figure, that is true.
Round is a figure.
Trustee Zarate?
Yes, I would also like to thank everyone who came out today and voiced their opinion, and it's things like this that we need people like you to come out and voice your opinions. We do listen, we do try our very best to help everyone, and yes, it is sad to see what's going on in this world. It's heartbreaking. I, myself, I pray for everyone. It doesn't matter what race you are, what religion you are. There is no answer sometimes when people, everybody's got their own opinion, but what matters most is to see these poor babies, these poor people, these are parents, these are grandparents, these are aunts, uncles. Why? Why does it have to come to this? You know, we, we understand everybody's got their own opinion, and we respect that, and I wish we could live in a better world. We have our own children, we have our own parents, our grandchildren, our, you know, we don't know what's down the road for them. And that's the sad part, is that they are young, but they're seeing this on TV. It breaks my heart, because they ask you questions, why? So I would hope that everybody leaves here with some kind of peace and prayer. We have to pray more and hope that this world changes. It's not going to happen overnight, but all I could say from my family to yours, you're all in my prayers, we all agree to disagree sometimes, but God bless you all, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, trustee Zarate. Ian, and your scouts who definitely had to go home to get to school tomorrow, you came to one heck of a meeting, as the mayor alluded to. This is democracy at its best. A few big topics this evening. I did hear a lot of themes that were between the two, now they are definitely not related, but one thing that resonated with me is love, peace, kindness, understanding, and listening to each other. I think this board tonight, we all had nothing else to do other than listen. I think we all should listen, take suggestions that are made, frankly, on any side of either issue. One thing I will say, Attorney Olson, I am curious to see what was submitted today, if we haven't got it yet. Our staff is working incredibly hard, so I hope that no insinuation was made against our village staff, a lot of which are here this evening and have taken time out, because that is not the case. Something of this much interest, which frankly, I've only been on this board since 2019, I don't recall this much interest in any topic, I think including cannabis. So I think we should give it the attention that's warranted, and I hope that any insinuation is not being made towards the staff, which is working incredibly hard on a topic of incredible public interest. So I will say that, and I'm eager to read, I'm hoping that we get to see what was submitted. On the second topic and the latter topic, I did meet with a group of residents earlier this evening on the topic that was brought up, on the ceasefire resolution. There's a lot of room for us to discuss this. I still think between that group, and that group knows that, I think we have a lot of determination to do whether local government is most appropriate. However, that is something that I think we can talk through and figure out what the appropriate stance is. There's a lot of comments I can make on state government, there's a lot of comments I can make on our federal government. Sometimes, though, what's best for us here in Bolingbrook, and what I believe we are elected to do is represent the interests of Village of Bolingbrook per view. That being said, I do want to make sure that we hear that group out appropriately. So that'll, and that will occur, and it sounds like it's going to occur to many other trustees, including our mayor. Have a good evening. I know it's a long meeting, and I hope we all have a chance to reflect on everything said this evening. Thanks.
Trustee, I do want to echo a lot of the same sentiment that was discussed tonight, but I do want to just keep it very general and keep more concise matters to actual conversation. But what's in the room tonight, a lot of people taking the time out of their evening to be here, it just screams passion, and I've had experience with a lot of passion in my past life, and I would say passion is very important. It's not something that you can teach, you can't fake it, and sometimes it's just innate, you're born with it, right? So being passionate about a particular subject, a particular position, is very important because it leads to bigger conversations. But I will say that these conversations can be of grand magnitude, right? This is a global issue that we're talking about. This is not my advice, but I think the best approach to make someone feel your passion is to assume slight ignorance, not to assume that they know as much as you do. And I think having those healthy conversations, having some healthy discourse, typically you'll find a common ground in anything that you want to discuss, right? I don't want to make an analogy, but I suck at math, and if you're trying to force me to solve a math problem, and I don't understand that math problem, we can't find common ground. So you have to educate, meet with the trustees. Trustee Carbonzano and I met with a great group of residents tonight, and we're, and again, I'm not speaking for the board, but I think all of us here can agree that if there is an issue that does trickle into the local environment that we live in, we do want to support you. We're not ever here to deny a proposal for anyone's well-being, but it is good to have a plan. I go back to assuming that ignorance. If I, if something is presented to the board, I have to be able to speak to it as well as you can, so I could defend every point, and again, understand that passion. So if we take that route, I believe that's a little bit healthier, we'll find some more understanding. You never know. Monty is here. When we were, I don't want to get political, but when we were door knocking, we thought we wouldn't be friends, but we talked, right? We understood each other, we understood who we are, and we found common ground, right? So have a conversation and keep it clean, guys. Just a few village announcements that I want to give. Huge shout out to the BHS Lady Raiders basketball team. They are now ranked number one in state with a huge win over Sandberg tonight. So yeah, let's definitely. And as far as village events, I lost it, but Black History Month celebration taking place February 10th.
Yeah, 2 o'clock.
I'm going off the brain, 2 o'clock, you guys can help me out, 2 o'clock. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Be on the lookout for that event, it'll be on our village calendar, and again, please keep supporting, and again, have the conversations. Thank you, everyone.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's good to see all of you come out and voice your opinion, so just thanks for coming out.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Great to see everyone here. I wish we had more involvement like we did today, so thank you for being here and voicing your opinion on the different subjects. Please understand that we are here for you, and we are here to hear you, so thank you for being here tonight. That's all I have, thank you.
Before we move, I would be remiss if I did not thank and congratulate our public work staff. They worked extremely hard, keeping our streets as safe as absolutely possible, and yes, there was probably about 100 people that swear their street was the last street to get out. I am one of them, but anyway, these guys, you, until you have experienced being in a snowplow, I drove a snowplow and moving it. No, 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 I drove one, thank you, and my foot was not removed from the brakes, just to let you know. So yes, I rode one, and every bone in my body, I thought shattered. These things are humongous, it's difficult, they're out there 12, 15 hours. There is a shortage of contractors that actually now want to come out, so the cul-de-sacs and the courts and so on and so forth. We have an amazing snow command group, they worked hours and hours and hours, and I commend them, and some people, if you venture onto that Facebook world that we love so much and so dearly, even commended our staff and kind of called out Naperville. So if you guys are interested in what other communities are doing or aren't doing, or how they're performing compared to us, go check out their webpages, or Facebook pages, or whatever. But anyway, congratulations to our entire public work staff. We have no executive session this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Carbonzano, second. Trustee Quintero, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, and please drive and be safe.